I hereby call the Boynton City Council Study Session for April 6 to order, and I will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that there are six members present. Councilmember Pennington had notified me earlier today that he will not be able to attend. Do I have a motion to excuse?
So moved.
So moved. I have a second. All right, all those in favor? Motion passed 6-0. Councilmember Pennington is excused. All right. Were there any correspondence regarding the study session?
No correspondence.
Okay. It'll be now time for public comment. Comments for the public must be limited to the items of business on the study agenda, session agenda, per Council Rule 10. And those that have signed in, you have the list for me? No one signed in? Well, then I won't even go through the formalities there. Then I'm going to turn the floor over to you, Michael.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. This is, what comes next is the best part of my job, except for the fact that working closely with the council. Okay, so, no, seriously, it's really a great opportunity, and I'm excited that we're going to do some employee recognition tonight. And overall, I think that our city, without question, is blessed with extraordinary employees, extraordinary staff, dedicated, hardworking, accurate, very capable. And so acknowledging some really special efforts is, is a great pleasure. But first, I want to acknowledge Katie Bevagni. Katie, would you?
She's out of town.
She's out of town? Oh, okay, great. All right, we'll move it. Okay, well, let me, let me tell you why we're calling out Katie. Assistant Harbor Master Katie Bevagni earned her certified marina operator certification. To become a CMO, Katie first had to complete her intermediate marina management and advanced marina management courses from the Association of Marina's Industry Training Institute, which is a national organization. She then had to attend studies and training in California. Upon completion of her courses, Katie had to submit an extensive application for review and approval to the CMO Board, Certified Marine Operator Board, along with recommendations from certified marina managers she has made relationships with over the years. Katie was awarded this recognition, very prestigious award, in that there are only 73 certified marina operators worldwide. So we're proud of Katie. Yeah, that's great. She can watch the, the tape of this. Well, she's, she's busy, right? Okay. And next, this is really a pleasure. I want to acknowledge Ms. Terriann Dell. And let me start with the fact that Terriann currently is our longest tenured city employee.
Awesome.
Yeah. And it, you know, in a, in a variety of responsibilities, but I want to focus on one specifically. In August 2020, with Terriann as the project manager, the city began the implementation of a new financial, human resources, and payroll system called Munis. On January 1, 2022, the city went live with the new system. Since then, we're able to do our own payroll, no longer depend on or pay ADP to do it for us, which is an external company that we had previously hired to do our payroll. We all do it, do it all in-house, save the money from that. Last November, we were able to do our first electronic benefit open enrollment campaign for our staff, and the key word being electronic. An electronic timekeeping system called Executime, exec, whatever, was, can't even pronounce it, she does it, was built, and in August of last year, Terriann began training city staff in the use of this new system. In March of this year, we were able to electronically submit 1095Cs to the, to the IRS for the first time ever. And that's a form that has to document that we have healthcare in the city and provide that. And so now, for the first time in many years, we're current with the IRS, which I think is always a goal. But I want to say one thing about Terriann, is that as she was able to, you know, these milestones of accomplishments would occur. And one thing that, that was so striking was I would run into Terriann in the break room where we'd be talking, and she was excited to accomplish what she's accomplished on behalf of the city. And that, to me, that's the greatest proof of commitment and, and capability. So with that, Terriann, thank you so much.
I have to say, it was truly a group effort. The team of HR and finance staff, it wasn't just me, it was all of them as well. So they should get a round of applause as well.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, that's really fun. So following up with that, I'd like to ask Chief Thomas to give us an update. He presented this at Public Safety tonight, and let the council know as a whole in our community, some efforts from the police department. Chief?
Yes, thank you, and good evening. So I received a letter today. However, I had verbal notification last Friday. We had the inspectors from WASPIC come out to the police station and do the final inspection of our operations for accreditation, WASPIC accreditation. Now, that consists of 146 standards that we have to prove that we maintain. So, and it's, I shouldn't say accreditation, it's re-accreditation. So we've been accredited, and, and it's harder to stay accredited than it is to get accredited the first time, because it happens every four years. And you have to prove to get re-accredited that you have been in compliance with all 146 standards for all four years. So if you don't live accreditation, if you slack off, if you don't keep up with it, you won't get re-accredited. And I'll tell you, there are police departments throughout the state who do not get re-accredited or maintain their accreditation. And in fact, about 20% of the police departments in the state of Washington, only 20% are accredited. So it's very difficult to get, and then it's very difficult to maintain. And I'm just incredibly proud of our staff and the work that they do to maintain that level of professionalism, professionalism. So real briefly, some of the benefits to accreditation, it increases public confidence in the agency. It intensifies administrative and operational effectiveness, and it decreases the susceptibility to litigation and costly civil court settlements. And it potentially, and in our case, it does reduce our cost of insurance for the city. So with all of that, I'm very, very pleased to report that we've maintained accreditation. We've, we're going to get the official award next month at the WASPIC conference, but I have the letter and I have the verbal. And, and it's important that we were absolutely 100%. They call it a clean onsite, 100% clean. So that's a, that's the, obviously, the highest level you can get. So very good news.
Yeah. Chief, really appreciate that. But I think what's important to know, unfortunately, we'll be losing our chief as of June 30. But the, the re-accreditation and that ongoing process, I think, is sort of living testimony to the culture that the chief has instituted with our PD. Just done a great job of it. Created mobility, created opportunities, created a culture of accountability, which is what accreditation is about, and doing the procedures and the protocols correctly. So with that, Chief, thank you. So now it's my turn to give this over to someone else to talk. So we have the pleasure tonight of having Jenna Franklin and Chris Hoffman, who are selected consultants to work with council on communications issues. Wanted to introduce them. They're here tonight. Ask Jenna and Chris maybe say a few words about the process we talked about, and, you know, just introduce yourselves. So glad you're here. Thank you.
Yeah, hi. My name is Chris Hoffman, and I'm, I'm very excited to be working with the city and with the council on finding ways where the council and as the city as a whole can better communicate with its citizens. And we're looking forward to getting, starting on that very soon. And we'll be hopefully talking to each of all the, all the council members to learn a little bit more about your priorities, concerns, and ideas for, for communications. And I'll turn it over to Jenna.
And Chris, we, just to make it complicated, you'd come in a normal meeting, council would be sitting at the dais with their names, so you don't know who's who. We didn't do that intentionally, so.
Sure, I'll learn.
Good evening, council members. I'm Jenna Franklin, and I'm Chris's counterpart at Consoor. We just appreciate the process you're going to undertake. One of the goals we have is really to listen and learn about what the legacy of leadership and what you're trying to achieve for your city look like, and how we can support that through streamlining and/or building new communication tools for you. So as we move through the process and start getting to know you, we focus really heavily on just listening and learning and identifying the ways that we can take your input and put them into strategies that will work for you as a city, but also for your citizenry.
Great. Counsel, I don't know if you have any questions. I think the next step in the process will be, Bonnie, we'll, we'll be working with each of you individually to set up times that you can meet with Chris and Jenna and potentially other members of their team. And they can, you know, get your input, which is the critical component of the first phase of this. And that will then lead to trying to compile all the inputs into some type of scope of work about how to advance communication, the council's view, and then what our next steps from that would be. So I think that's the process. Certainly, Mayor, if there are any comments or questions?
No, I'm excited to get this process started. You know, we've obviously been busy coming out of COVID, and then actually getting to put, get a, get a selection process, and now finally get down to the nuts and bolts and improve our communication amongst each other, with staff, and the city and our residents as well. So welcome. Does anybody else have any comments? No? I guess we're pretty quiet tonight.
Looking forward to it.
Really quick, let's, we will take the time. I'd like to go around the room with the council members, just to introduce them, so you have that, because we don't have signs. And I'm going to start with you, Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Mr. Hoffman, I believe we've met before, and when you were with WashDAD. And I just, I just wanted to comment very positively. You sent a follow-up note after we talked, and it was called "No Surprises." And I, I was struck by that. I thought it was a very nice touch, and it's, it's an idea that I've written down for incorporating here. And Ms. Franklin, yeah, my name's J.C. Harris, and it's a pleasure to meet both of you.
Pleasure times. Thank you.
I'm Councilmember Harry Steinmetz. Nice to meet you.
Deputy Mayor Tracy Buxton, nice to meet you. Looking forward to it.
We'll go down to Jeremy. Go ahead.
Councilmember Jeremy Nutting. I'm the longest-running council member on council right now, 10 years. Look forward to your ideas and moving forward here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Gene Oxiger, and I'm also a council member. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, guys. And I just want to say, Terriann, you know, you're part of this. And we're not going to, exciting as this is, we're not going to hold our consultants to staying, and you're certainly not required to either. I can't imagine why you leave, but you're certainly welcome. Anyways, thank you very much. We'll, council will be following up with Chris and Jenna.
All right. As we move into the council goal-setting study session follow-up, essentially, I'm going to have Michael say a few words. The idea afterwards is give the floor to everybody on a pass to make comments, and then we'll probably do one more follow-up and wrap up. And if there's anything Michael wants to add at the end, then we'll, we'll look, we'll look toward adjournment and go to the next meeting. So with that, I'll turn the floor to Michael.
Thank you again, Mayor. So part of tonight, and this is part of a process, right? But so tonight is a follow-up to the discussion we had earlier in the year relative to establishing priorities or reorganizing priorities, or comments about priorities should be from council. And the first part of that, as you recall, was a pretty exhaustive description by our staff as to what we currently do. And I think there were two sort of guidelines that we want to uphold in this. And one came from former council member Louisa Banks, who called any request for action on something new, she always called it "one more thing." And the "one more thing" always had to be balanced by "one less thing," because we were pretty much maxed out. And I think that was the message from, from our meeting with, with all of you. The other one is Councilmember Pennington, who said "more with less is not the answer." It can be the answer at a critical time. It could be the answer for the finance department during budget season. It could be in any number of cases, you could try and do more with less, because that's really what all cities have literally been reduced to, partly by labor demand and other, other issues, the unavailability of labor. But the idea is that saying "more with less long-term," which I've called this out before, is not an appropriate request. And, and it has huge implications, because we don't want people operating heavy equipment to be exhausted because they've been working overtime. Same thing with our cops. There was a time, a number of years ago, when I first started, I think we had seven officers on light duty, and we had seven vacancies. And the operations commander at that time refused to allow vacations, because we simply didn't have the staff to cover the city. That's not a tenable outcome over the long term. And people need breaks, they need their time, and they need to be able to deal with their families, and that's all good stuff. So those were kind of the premises from, from what we, what we presented. And tonight, we thought, as another part of this follow-up, we requested council to identify what their priorities are, if they have specific priorities or things they'd like to see accomplished. We received some inputs. I'll let the, the council members reiterate whatever they want to, and I'll respond when I can, based on what those are. So with that, Mayor, I think with that, we'd just go around the table and see what people have to say.
All right. I'm going to be working from right to left. I'm going to start with Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just go down the list. Colleagues, you've seen the response. But I think the website, I'm struck by people who, you know, they, there needs to be a way to, just for people to get links to meetings. There was a big change in the Public Safety Committee agenda today, this week, and particularly of interest to people in Redondo, and they need a way to find, that's just the most basic thing. They need a way to find the agendas and to be pinged if there are changes, these kind of notifications. I know the software already does it. That's why I asked about it, because you stressed low resources. And beyond that, I've asked about reporting so many times. I do think that we should have neighborhood reporting on things like crime. I think that's what people, I'm, I'm sorry, city manager, but I think anybody who's on the Citizens Advisory Committee will want to know, okay, what are the calls for service in my area? And I think we can get back to Zoom, which we had. And we can certainly get some multimedia equipment and make our community meetings, you know, get them onto YouTube and make them accessible to the community. And last but not least, I will stress that the parks, not just Cecil Powell, but I understand about COVID and all this other stuff, but people are, they, there is a pent-up frustration on a lot of levels. And I fully understand that you do not want to tax employees, but at least some movement has to take place. Cecil Powell is a small park. We have to at least do some efforts this year, in spite of COVID, just because people are frustrated. And I think that's about it for round one.
Yeah, Councilmember, I appreciate your comments. However, I think you were in receipt of an email from our Public Works Director that they're actually moving forward with the process to make the improvements to the park you mentioned. So this year, yeah, that, that was in the email, that it's, it's much more timely than that. Also want to mention, since we're talking about parks, one thing, Councilmember Nutting, I think, had been very supportive of this and articulated it often, that we are currently trying to figure out exactly what the dynamic to open Stephen Underwood Park to the public daily. And that involves, I see Andrew. Andrew, do you have any other, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Do you have any other comments about Cecil Powell or anything?
No, you get it on that.
Okay, good. So, so we're working, you know, actively trying to figure out what's the security piece look like. And that's, we do employ security at the marina, and we're looking to see if there's some way to dovetail that. And the other thing is that we need to have maintenance of the bathrooms, hygiene, and, and kind of the use of the park by the people it's intended to serve, which are children and families. So to make sure that that is what the clientele that's able to use the park is as nicely as I can say that. But that's some of the challenges, but those are moving forward. And partly because Councilmember Nutting, every time I see him, I tell him the same thing. But no, appreciate, appreciate you pushing on that. So anyways, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Steinmetz?
Yeah, thank you. I, I'm glad to hear about the parks and, and some focus being there, because I do, I do agree, that's an important piece, and I think there is a little pent-up frustration. And I'm glad to see that the movie is addressing, or the city is addressing that and moving forward with it. So that's great. I also would somewhat reiterate the concerns about getting a web, a city website that's more functional. I think it's still a source of frustration. And, you know, to the extent that we can make it more easier to find things, more communicative, I think would be a definite plus. And then thirdly, the, the thing that I would like to see, and I'm just sort of an add-in, and I'm not sure what the subtract out is going to be for this, but, you know, we have seen swings in our climate that, over winters and summers, that we just simply haven't seen in the last, you know, 10 years ago. And we have had a serious need for both warming stations and cooling stations. We have, on an ad hoc basis, I think, tried to address that at some point, but we're not able to do that on a regular basis. I would like to see some planning go into, how do we, sort of on a regular basis, when, when the need exists, that we use something like the senior center, and I don't, I'm not wedded to the senior center, but it's a nice, big space, it's a clean space, and staff that with volunteers. The cert team comes to mind, if you want another suggestion for them. You know, and be able then to provide a, a warm place when it gets really, really cold around here for people to stay, if that's what they need, and a place to cool off, because we do have air conditioning, I believe, some form of climate control in there, when it gets really, really hot. And I think those are extremes that need to be addressed, for, addressed for, for the people in this community, particularly at the lower end. And they need our help, and I think it would be a good way to use our resources. And if we can do it with volunteers, we can sort of keep, keep the cost down.
Councilmember, thank you. Obviously, we'll make note of that. A couple of things, the, the intent of some of that ARPA money was to buy misters. And then we found out that you can't really have misters indoors because they are damp, right? So then the question is, well, how, how best and most effectively, effectively to deploy those? And I think you're, you know, what you're concerned about, obviously, we're concerned about as well, and we're concerned as part of emergency management. One of the things I would, would mention is that during COVID, we One of the things I would mention is that during COVID, we were able to utilize the Senior Center relative to providing lunches to thousands of residents over the course of that terrible pandemic. So that is a resource and a facility we can use. We've looked at the costs of putting air conditioning in that building are extremely high. And I'm not saying it isn't money well spent, it's just, it's something council's going to have to think about when the time comes. So, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Buxton, I'll go to you next.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is a great opportunity tonight, and I would like to open with a thank you to the public because it's through their input and communication and willingness to interact that we, we gain our vision for this community. So I appreciate those who come to this meeting, to give pub, offer public comment, and to think, and to go through the community and write to us and meet with us in person in different venues. So, thank you. And I also want to give a deep appreciation for the challenges that are faced by, with our staff. We heard a very detailed presentation, and great thanks for the hard work that they've put out this year in our COVID recovery time. And to really, you know, in prep for this, I reviewed our 2022 goals, and to me, that this staff has done an incredible job in addressing almost everything that we collectively put on the table, the highest agreement items, there were five of them. And I was, I was so pleasantly surprised to see how almost everything has either been addressed or is in process currently, right now. So those, I'm just going to mention those five areas and a couple of asks for each. In regard to public safety, we asked for business outreach, community outreach, some attention to PACC Highway, attention to mental health, cameras, and support in Olympia, and all that has happened, and it's, a lot of that is continuing right now. My ask is in, for a serious conversation around budget season regarding the sustainability of some of these ARPA-funded public safety positions. We did, we authorized mental health, but also I'm, I would like to have a serious conversation about the sustainability or even adding some positions. I feel pretty strongly about that. Love that conversation at budget time. In regard, so number two was communication, and really all items that were spoken about and that so far have been spoken out about tonight are probably going to be addressed, heard, talked about, brainstormed. Marina and economic development. Every aspect was addressed through planning, research, development, code enforcement, communication, and transportation connections, and excited about the ferry. I did have a question that, and people ask about this connectivity with 635, and I was wondering if you might comment on that briefly, because you did answer me about the community connections. You can do it now or at the end.
Okay.
Okay. And then I'm wondering if we could get a welcoming and wayfinding briefing in regard to the ferry, so when that comes up, and if the council does decide to move forward with the ferry, to maybe if we could have a briefing about what kinds of things we're doing to prepare, like roll up the red carpet or welcome mat the ferry. Programming in parks, that's been addressed, and I just wanted to say, it's been a vibrant recovery since COVID. I was looking at the Currents magazine, there are eight pages of senior activities in the, in the Currents magazine, and four pages for youth and family programming, which is what it was in 2019. The end of 2019, I went back and looked at that. We, we've done an amazing job in programming parks and events recovery. So I'm, three questions in regard to that. With our partnership with Highline School District, we re-upped that a couple months ago. I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity to advertise some of those programs in Currents, since we have that partnership? Then wondering if we could get a briefing, municipal facilities in regard to buildings and the beach park. Not all of those buildings down there are historical, and wondering if we might be able to peruse some options for increasing revenue, enhancing the buildings, or something with buildings that are not historical. And then I also would like a conversation about a sustainable policy regarding how we either host or operate community events. Which community events is, are, is the city sustainably going to be responsible for, and which are we going to depend on a nonprofit and how to work that? It would be nice to have a conversation about that. Then the last item that, from last year, in regard to our committees, that's been addressed, adding a Citizens Advisory Committee, and we're having the conversation about recording and communication. That's all I had. Super happy with the progress we've made this year, absolutely incredible coming out of COVID. So happy with this staff. I love to talk about this administration and staff in the public. Thank you.
Thank you. So when you get the answers to those, just send them to me? Okay. So I think that the issue of sustainability coming out of, you know, we've been essentially very careful in the use of the ARPA money for it to be designated to one-time type of costs. For example, the ferry service, we will not be able to sustain that in the long term without support from elsewhere. There's no question about that. I think we're testing the waters, so use a metaphor. But at any rate, the, but the issue of sustainability for the law enforcement positions is really critical. I think that, that it's fair to note that you can use the ARPA funds all the way through December 31 of 2026. So that gives us some breathing room to start planning for how those can be funded. And, and, and that's a significant challenge, absolutely. But something, obviously, we want to maintain because, you know, sort of our view of how we approach this, there are, there are like three aspects of creating the type of community we want. And one is making sure that there's sufficient economic development, job creation, business activity, that's one. That can't be accomplished without also appropriate law enforcement. George used to say you can't have economic development without law enforcement, you can't have law enforcement without economic development. And then the third is, I think, quality of life, which has to do with parks and access and all of the recreational activities and everything else that we have. And so we're always trying to balance those. And, and that will be council's challenge, looking at future budgets, how to allocate resources to make those positions sustainable. In terms of the community shuttle, so that's, so it's called 635. It's a metro fixed route now, which means that it's going to be there in perpetuity, and it's going to, it has the stops that are currently designed. But one of the things that's really critical in all of this, and it's a much larger discussion, is that with the, you know, coming light rail station, both of those, one adjacent to the, well, both adjacent to the city, but one in Highline and the other further south, we folk, and then also you've got Bus Rapid Transit on PACC Highway, and you've got the extension of the, of 509. So the, the critical component in all of that is what's called the last mile. And the last mile is how do you, essentially, and it's usually the same in most jurisdictions, how do you get people from east to west to take advantage of the multimodal opportunities from light rail, bus service, the shuttle service, all of that? So we've had some discussions about how to do that. I think one of the things that we're hoping to do over time is, is fill in the blanks of where there could be additional service provided, and then the question is how to finance that. We were incredibly fortunate with the, the 635 community shuttle, because we started, that started as a partnership with Metro, where we split the cost. And our cost was about $120,000. They put in about $120,000, and we did that for three years. Despite COVID, we met the ridership goals. So Metro has now taken that over, which relieved us of $120,000, but also established fixed route service ongoing, which is fantastic. But providing connections to things like the Marina, effectively from north, from south to north, providing access for Wesley, I would throw Judson into that, thinking long-term of how for that, for that shuttle or a different mode of transportation to go up Marine View Drive all the way to 240th, and then go up to, past the college, to Highline, the college and the station, and then continue on to the Business Park, and how we can integrate both Woodmont and Redondo into that system. Those are all questions that come from the fact that we've established a foundation. So those are questions we're looking at. We'll obviously have conversations with council about how to deploy answers to that question. And it's complicated by the, the sort of geographical dynamic of the city with the length, you know, six miles long and two miles wide at different points. And so how do we service that? But then the point of having all the Rapid Transit and the shuttle and the, you know, Bus Rapid Transit and all the multimodal, including the ferry, that it defeats the purpose if you can't get people to the locations that could take advantage of it. So that will be, of course, part of the challenge. Let's see. We will give you an update on the ferry as soon as, we're still shooting for May 13th is the opening date, but we will brief council on what that all looks like as soon as we have some confirmation for some aspects of the operating agreements. And you had one other one. I have BP, what was that?
HSD Currents Partnership, Buildings, the Beach Park.
Oh, Beach Park, okay. So we had a discussion recently about that, and that is one of those, one more, one more thing. But I think what we need to do really is sort of very comprehensive master plan, looking at what's the reality of which buildings, I mean, we have the Sun Home Lodge, very expensive to renovate, Founder's Lodge, same thing. Some of the historic buildings, of course, there are different restrictions or controls on doing changes to those. So we need a plan, which we've not yet put together, to address that. That's a good point. That could go on the work plan, you know? But that, something like that, and the discussion I had, it's complicated with staff, and it's, would be surprising. See Andrew looking there very tenuously, hoping we don't make any commitments here, but no. But no, but it, it's a complicated issue, and it has to be addressed, because my sense is that we're barely scratching the surface with the revenue we could generate from our facilities. And, and I think that will help kind of establish the quality of what we can, what we can do, so.
There's just one particular building there, it's an eyesore.
Okay, moving on to Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. I may have taken a different approach, and I apologize. So my comments are, is we've made great progress from 2022 on our priorities with, with everything around town and what we've had available to us with staff, and I think we've done a great job. My priorities, excuse me, to continue to look at the Marina, the Marina redevelopment and take control of what we have control of, which we're doing. Communication, Chris and Jenna, I'm glad to have you guys aboard, so we can figure out what we're doing there. Public safety is one of my concerns. Done a handful of ride-alongs, and I think we have four mental health specialists available to us. We've hired two, and we have nobody available after the six o'clock hour for mental health. So when our officers approach somebody that is in crisis, that does not warrant any kind of arrest, but does need mental health, having an after-six o'clock mental health specialist available to us would help, I think. Our officers, maybe chief can speak to it, but I think having one of those four available after the six o'clock hour to help would be great. Continue to have a seat at the table to mitigate the port impacts on the city of Des Moines, multimodal transportation, which has been talked about, getting the shuttle down into Des Moines, Marina to the fast ferry service, and back out would help. Some of our seniors from Judson and Wesley enjoy those opportunities. Continue to acquire properties for open green spaces, parks, the way we've been able to expand, one of my favorite parks, the Midway Park, with all of the properties we've been able to, and overlook with the open green spaces. And then it pains me to say, technology. It always works until it doesn't. Our website needs to be more mobile-friendly, and due to some of the issues that I currently have had, it is not very mobile-friendly, and I do know staff is working on that, but if we need to make more investments into that, I'd be more for it. So those are my comments, and I'd be glad to answer any questions anybody has.
I don't know. I mean, I can say I agree. Those are all great points, and I think, you know, in, in their own way, I think that they're kind of on the horizon, if not immediate. I'm concerned about the mobile technology piece. I think you're right. To me, you know, and we've heard this before from the council, but the idea of acquiring parks, acquiring recreational opportunities is critical, and we've, you know, as we've spent over $2 million expanding Midway, and that, that's great, and then we just need to continue that, that movement. And we should have opportunities, possibly through the process of the comp plan update, we can look at areas in the city that, you know, council may want to preserve for open space or recreational areas, or change the zoning, whatever that is, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Oxiger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I guess going just far down the line here is, most everybody's already touched on things, but I want to emphasize a few things. I too agree that we definitely have to do something about communications. It's critical, all aspects of, of how we operate and how our citizens are able to interact with us. I also would like to see, though, that we place particular emphasis on studying and trying to find solutions to the health impacts on citizens due to Sea-Tac Airport. The study that came out from Public Health, Seattle County was pretty devastating, and that's not just me, that's the judge in the case that, you know, they were asking about why the port was redacting elements from that, but I think that's an issue that we really should put some emphasis on. But then the other thing in particular is our parks. COVID has had a, probably the greatest impact on our kids than it has on anybody else in the city. And Parks and Rec programs are, you know, essential in the development of our kids. Yes, we have added passive park space. The element of Parks and Rec that we need to really focus on, I believe, is an emphasis on active programming. is an emphasis on active programming. Uh, and you know, the National Parks Association points out that, you know, it's active parks and active programs that are uh, essential in, you know, developing the socialization of our kids and also, you know, teaching them values that keep them out of trouble. Uh, passive parks, although while they're nice and, you know, uh, people do get individual use out of them, they also tend to be uh, places where uh, youth can congregate and basically get into trouble. And so it's the supervision that comes from uh, active programming that I think we really need to, to focus on. And I'd like to see us at least restore the programs, not just the number of programs, but the, the uh, participation in those programs that we had, uh, at least in 2019, prior to the, to the pandemic. Thank you.
So Deputy Mayor, when you were looking through currents and you saw the equivalent programs currently being offered as in 2019, um, you said seniors and also parks?
Yeah, that family, uh,
the youth and family programs. I didn't go through each page and count the entries, but I flipped through the pages. I kind of wanted to see, well, how are we really doing? But, so I, I didn't count each thing.
No, thanks, appreciate that, thank you.
I, if I could elaborate. I just want to point out that it's not just offering the programs, it's getting the participation that we had before. Because there's been a break in the chain of, you know, people figuring, okay, it's time to sign the kids, it's up for softball, it's time to, you know, sign them up for whatever. Uh, we have to, you know, in some sense, you know, restart the clock and get people going in. And this, it has a, it has a long-term effect because, you know, these programs are generally, you know, run in the summer by, you know, seasonal workers that tend to come from our kids that participated in the programs in the first place. That chain has been broken. And so, you know, people are saying, well, we're having difficulty in uh, finding people to do these programs. It's incumbent on us to get this program back up and running again. And it's going to take a while to, you know, bridge that gap that's been in there.
Councilmember, how, what would be your suggestion?
Well, I, as far as, you know, I, we're supposed to set the policy and the goals. I don't know that.
Well, when you say.
Tell you how to do it.
Yeah, I'm, I, I'm probably not clear. And if you could elaborate, I'd appreciate it. What it means the chain is broken. Okay, our entire society and world went through three years of COVID. All of us are coming back from that and trying to come back from that. So when you say the chain is broken, is that because of COVID? Or what, I'm not quite sure what chain or what the solution, solution is. I'm just curious if you have ideas about that.
Well, the chain is that kids that have come through the system graduate into becoming, you know, the, the rec leaders and, you know, the people that run the programs later on. We've now got a gap in there because, you know, there were periods there where those kids were not, you know, participating in the programs. They possibly found something else to do. Uh, it means that we have to go out and advertise. We have to go out and, and uh, encourage kids to, you know, come back to the programs and those that are in the programs to consider this as being, you know, something that they want to pursue.
Yeah, council, councilmember, thank you. Um, I can only say that, we have Kyle here. And Kyle, that's right. And Kyle is probably, you know, and there's competition for this, but clearly one of the hardest working members of our staff, who's down here on weekends, he's down here during the week. He's doing everything he can in his power to kind of reestablish the programs that you're talking about. Um, everybody faces the problem of employment. We have open positions, we have a hard time finding people. We're not the only ones. All Parks departments, when you go to the Parks Directors meetings, they all talk about the same thing, which is appropriate staff to address the issues. So yes, okay, the, the, the missing link. The missing link is continuity of service over three years that now we've got to rebuild. We are in the process of doing that. So I appreciate your comment. I take it as constructive and not critical. And that's the path that we're on.
Okay, and I was not in any way being critical of the efforts that the Parks Department is trying to do. I'm saying that it takes extra effort. There, you know, obviously they're going to need extra resources in order to accomplish this. And what I'm saying is if we're setting priorities, I think one of our priorities should be to make sure that those resources are available.
Fair enough.
Um, I'm going to use the word continue quite a bit because I think we're already on path and not necessarily am I asking for too much or anything extra. But I think we need to continue the feasibility study of the Marina development. We need to figure it out and lock it down, both on the land side and the Marina side. Um, I think it's important to the city's future that we move forward. It's no secret, everybody knows that in the community, the way I feel. Um, public safety, I agree. Continue to support the efforts of the, of our, of our police. Um, continue to support legislation that favors um, fair law enforcement and work for that. And I agree with Deputy Mayor Buxton and we've got about three years to figure out how we can keep those positions ex- permanently, and I'd like to do so as well. Um, excited about the communication piece. We're continuing to improve and execute recommendations. I, I heard some specifics, I won't get into them or repeat them. Um, I also think we want to continue pursuing and finding the economic drivers. This is the money and the funds that are going to support a lot of the extra things in the future we need to do without burdening our, our residents and taxes. Um, it's one of the great things that I think we have tremendous opportunities coming from multiple directions to fund the city. And I think that's a lot of your good work and I compliment you and your staff for it. Uh, the investment in development. I know that you give several tours, I've been part of some of them. We want to continue to um, pursue those that are interested in investing in our community. I would love to see um, something, if we could create something using your, your expertise in economic development, that might be some kind of material that we can advertise to the investors and developers and business owners of why they should do business here in the future. Um, the, the, the capital improvement projects, I think it's a very aggressive list. Um, my compliments to Andrew and his team and everybody else, for that matter. The fact that we're finally, looks like we have a good shot of being able to start the fishing, fishing pier at Redondo and some of the other projects, and the, some of the ones we just finished recently, the park expansion, everything else, when you look at the list, we're paving roads, stuff that not been seen for, for decades um, until the last few years because of the situation we're put in. And just continue to pursue those. Um, I think you set lofty goals and the amazing thing is a majority of those get done. And I just want to encourage you to keep that up. It's not adding anything extra. I was going to mention the last mile on the buses. Uh, I think the Star Lake Route too, um, but that's going to be a few years delayed where it sounds like the Kent Des Moines Station might have the possibility open earlier. But I think bus routes and connecting everybody from the south to the north side into those access points or down to the Marina to use our ferry is going to be a great thing. Um, I, and that's it. Really, it's about continuing to do those things. And um, I would agree with, with several of the comments my colleagues have said as well. But yeah, I don't really have anything new other than that, but just um, kind of continue to do the good work and the priorities we've already set forth.
Mayor, thank you. I'll just take this to be closing comments from, from myself. But um, I think that going back, Councilmember Nutting, 10 years, it's like time off for good behavior. No, um, the uh, you know, he was here uh, before I was, actually. And one of the things that we've enjoyed, and it's kind of the legacy to you all, were previous councils who had kind of the foresight and the commitment to support things as they were emerging. And that's especially true of the Marina, but it's, it's true of a number of things. Um, you know, going forward with the ferry service, going forward with the 635 shuttle, going forward with um, development in the Business Park, which is really the heart that pumps the blood into the city. Um, those are all really positive things and they came from leadership of council. And all the things that you've talked about tonight, all of them legitimate, um, could never be accomplished without the approval and support of the council. And that happens financially through the budget process and through goal setting. So, you know, thank you for the accolades because we have an incredible staff and we're able to do a lot of, a lot of things. But would, none of it would have happened without the support and leadership of the council over the years.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open the floor to some quick closing comments by each council member, if you choose to do so. Um, Councilmember Harris, would you like to?
You bet, thank you, Mayor. Um, I would, wow, yeah. I would just like to say that um, I talk a lot to people about the gravity of the city. And if you think about it, the city, the, the focus of the city has been around 216th and uh, Marineview Drive for a long time. The gravity of our residents has shifted south. And so everything that you see, the amenity that people like near where I live, uh, should be applied to the south end. So there's a 635. And then people use that to get to Angle Lake. Great, there should be a second 635. That makes a analogous loop for the south end and Highline. We have to start focusing a lot of attention on that light rail station because that's going to be strategically, that's going to be the thing for the next 20 years in terms of public safety, economic development, um, where younger families are moving. And we have to put the city's attention in that direction, in my opinion. Just everything you think about, think about it over there. Not so much, you know, we spend so much time talking about the Marina and 216th. I don't think if you did a text search of all our meetings, we spend so much effort on a very narrow part of the town. Um, and um, beyond that, uh, build the dry stack now as far as the Marina goes because uh, that's the one thing that actually generates the money. So focus on where the families are, bring them what they want, and build the dry stack now. Thank you.
Councilmember, I'm confused if you could clarify. You're, you say to emphasize the south end and then you say the first project should be in the Marina.
Well, I, I think. I think you guys can do all kinds of things at once because I, uh, you know, know how competent and talented everyone is. But um, the one thing at the Marina that should be the focus is making the money, bringing back the launch and having the dry stack and then focusing on the things that cost. That's just the way I view it. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinmetz.
Yeah, just to, in closing, I mean, I didn't, my, my little presentation was very brief because I thought we were just responding to what the previous presentation was. And so I wanted to bring out the three things that I think may have gotten a little bit of a short shrift and, you know, one just totally new idea to throw out there. So that, that doesn't mean I don't think the city is going in, you know, how do I, the city's going in the right direction. I agree with most of the priorities that were presented and with what the staff is doing. Um, I do hear what Councilmember Oxiger is saying about uh, Parks and Recs and I, and I agree with that wholeheartedly. Um, but I think it's a budget issue. I think that's, we've got to discuss that in the budget because I think if we're going to increase resources, meaning money for staff, uh, in order to get more staff to run some of these summer programs, uh, you know, that, that's a budget issue. And that's where we need to address that. Uh, you know, my, my oldest son was a camp chaos kid all the way through and the teenage group, and then his first job was as a counselor with there. And that's, that's the, that's what we need to rebuild. And yeah, it was COVID that just broke that apart. Uh, and everything shrunk and we need to expand it again. So um, you know, I think there are some, some great ideas, some good priorities coming out of this, perhaps in addition to, uh, and we got to figure out, you know, what, what the staff can put out towards, towards later. And I understand we have to do that. Um, but I think that, uh, you know, in general, the city's going in the right direction. Uh, I agree with most of the priorities that are uh, set by the city. And I think there are some extra things that we can add in here. So, thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Buxton.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, well, I said I didn't realize I would have closing remarks, so I did thank everybody. But I think my overall reflection is how interesting it is that communication seems to be woven through almost every recommendation that each council member had on their list. And how this communicate, good communication, appropriate communication, a lot of communication is going to facilitate a lot of these things. I, our city manager talks a lot about uh, the, the value of connecting and relationship regionally, uh, interpersonally with us and any staff. You can have the best job in the world and hate it. You could go to school and say, I've got my dream job because of the people that you work with. But you can clean out sewers and laugh every day because you work with a great crew. And so it's the quality of relationship that we build with our city, our residents, our citizens, with each other, with the staff, with other cities, our interconnectedness, that is going to help facilitate all of this vision. And I, so in one way, that's the thing I'm looking forward to most is, is working with the, this consultant to just improve that ability to get, to bring these visions or this cumulative vision to pass while we're here. So, and excited about our future. Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I think we have, um, in a lot of these um, uh, requests have moved forward very well in the last couple of years. Um, COVID has presented several challenges. Um, and trying to be very, um, I, I'm trying to be very good here. Um, I, I think the, the Parks and Rec thing um, that Councilmember Oxiger has brought up has, um, because of COVID, presented very many challenges to the city. Um, and in my personal experience, I do know that we are working through some challenges that need to be seriously addressed. Um, and I know staff is working on that um, to get personnel in the right positions to bring back the um, the programs that we are used to seeing. So um, I know staff is working very diligently to work through those challenges to get us to that position. And I do look forward to having those programs, um, which I've, I've pushed for as well, um, for our children and our seniors to be opened up. So those are my closing remarks.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Oxiger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, we've got, we've got a lot that we're expecting here. And it's, you know, the, the question that came up was uh, we've got a full plate, you know, if you add something, what are you going to take away? That sort of thing. Again, I just want to emphasize our kids. Again, I just want to emphasize, our kids need our help. That, to me, should be our number one priority. Thank you.
I, I really don't have any closing comments on this regard. I, I think you've got some, I really appreciate council's feedback here. I thought you brought some interesting things to the table, not anything of a surprise. And my compliments to you, Michael, and your staff. I know, it's over the last five and some years that I've been on council, I've really seen the efforts. It's amazing what's been accomplished in the last few years and it's comparatively to the past. It, it's night and day, in my opinion. I'm going to change the subject really quick because it's the interest of, of all our residents. So, I met with the Chief Administrative Officer, Bonnie Wilkins, today on the Citizens Advisory Committee and I want to thank the community for the many applications we received. In some neighborhoods, it was quite impressive and almost overwhelming. That information will be put forth tomorrow as my recommendations going forward for the council to approve. All that information will be in the packet when it's notified. Details, details and bullet points of future steps and going forward will be provided at the April 13th meeting as well and then we'll pursue, but I really do want to thank the community. I saw a lot of people posting and sharing out and soliciting for people to do, do the application. I will say this, that all applications were good and some of the choices were hard on my recommendation. I'll just say that much, but look forward to that, that, that process in the next meeting and with that, do I, the next meeting will obviously be April 13th, it's a regular city council meeting and do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Have a second. All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.